Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight. This is the November 16th, 2020 Regular Schedule Board of Education Meeting. Again, thank you to everybody who's joining us online tonight. We appreciate you being with us. Guys, if you'd join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Roush, roll call, please.
Yep. President McFarland.
Here.
Vice President Singer.
Here.
Secretary Roush is here. Treasurer Fredell.
Here.
Member Baker.
Here.
Member Blasey.
Here.
Member Lauterbach.
Here.
Of all seven present.
All right, fantastic. Okay, we've got a bit of a schedule tonight, so we're going to jump right into our consent agenda. We have Item 2.1, the approval of the minutes from October 19th, 2020 Regular Schedule Meeting. Item 2.2 is the minutes from October 27th, 2020 Special Meeting. 2.3 is the approval of the minutes from the November 4th, 2020 Special Meeting. Item 2.4 is the following staff members have announced their resignation on the effective date, so those can be found on the agenda. Item 2.5 is the approval of the payment of the school system's bills for the month of September 2020 as listed in the check registers prepared by Ms. Holderby in the amount of The distribution of obligations by fund is included in the documentation, and there's a list of supporting documentation below that.
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda, Item 2.1 through 2.5.
Support.
Support.
John, I think.
Motion by Phil, support by John. Any discussion?
I did see in the FFO minutes that you discussed the executive summary report and keeping it in this section, and I just wonder if you could expand on what your findings were or your decision, how you came about with that decision.
Be happy to. I believe our decision was based on the fact that these are just supporting documentations to highlight the bill. We are not approving an executive report. The report is simply there for the purpose to provide support for the actual dollar amount that's being approved.
Okay.
We also looked at other places to put it and didn't identify any other better spot to put it.
Okay, so if it's for information and it's just supporting documents, we're not going to... We had the one instance with the purchase and the change order and the signage charges, and that was designated as approved because it was part of the approved consent agenda as part of this report. So I just wanted to make sure that we don't go through that process again.
If that wasn't why it was approved, it was approved not because of the supporting documentation, but because it was on, listed in there. So it would have been listed as a 2.2 or 2.3, where your supporting documentations are supporting the 2.5 approval only. It's a little bit different in that. So you have supporting documentation for your other bills payable as well. And so it's just, and that's why the FFO felt like it fit best in there. Same with the expense graph, you know, same with the PO documents, the supporting documents.
Okay.
At one time, remember, until you requested it, it was never in there.
It wasn't on the agenda, but it was part of the packet. We always had it every month. It just wasn't listed on the agenda in the consent agenda. It wasn't listed as an item, but it was part of the packet.
I don't believe so, but I'd have to go back and look at that.
That was my, I had the question was because we had the executive summary report in there, but it wasn't identified.
Again, Brian, I think the clarification is that we're not asking that you approve that. You're approving the overall bills payable, and that's a supporting document to show, just like the POs and the credit cards and all that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The pose? Okay, most curious. Thank you. Next up, we have presentation to the board. We have literacy coaching essentials.
We'll have Jen Service, our elementary curriculum instructional specialist, kick it off, and she will, Megan will bring her up into the screen. She has several folks with her, and I'll let her introduce them as well. This ties in very well to read by grade three and what we're doing in literacy with all that movement as well.
I see her.
Jen, we see you. Four is yours if you can hear us.
Hang on for a second.
Technology's great when it works right.
Yep.
Oh, is she here at the admin center?
She's in her office, correct.
We have to put her down there because we're trying to keep the capacity limit of the room within compliance. Worst-case scenario, we maybe bring her down here.
Can we hear anybody else on Zoom? Just out of curiosity.
I'm guessing not.
We could earlier today. We haven't had anybody speak yet.
There's Megan.
No.
Can folks on Zoom hear us?
Yeah.
Yep. Well, what we could do, Mr. McFarland, is we could go to one of the other presenters and see if they're able to go in so we can keep that moving, so we can move to the bar and mallet since they're here update, they're here present, and then we'll come back to Jennifer.
And then we can bring Jennifer in if we have to.
Correct.
Because these, okay. All right, so we'll do that. We'll make an adjustment in our agenda here, and we'll skip right ahead to 3-2. We have our bond update with Daryl and Rick.
Good evening.
Good evening, guys. Thanks for coming in.
Happy to be here. Excited to be in person. It's been a while since I've seen some of you guys. I mean, I feel like it's been a year, but it's been pretty close, so happy to be here tonight. We're going to kind of take a little trip down memory lane on the bond update and talk about some of the past projects.
We're going to need to keep on the mic for the recording, Daryl.
We're going to, you know, take a little trip down memory lane, look at some past projects. We've marked a pretty crucial point in the bond program with the completion of Series One, so we want to talk about a lot of the exciting things that happened there. You know, and in the spirit of the month, just, you know, express our gratitude and, you know, thanks for being a part of the bond program. I know I speak for Rick, for the two of us, you know, the Midland Public Schools. This program's been a, you know, it's really been one of the highlight of my career. So when we started putting this together and look at all the work that's been put in place, you know, we feel, you know, we're very happy to be here tonight to talk about a lot of these successes. And so do I have a presentation?
There you go.
All right, so yeah, if we, if we kind of start kind of looking back a little bit, everything we've done so far started back in 2014. That's when we completed the facility audit process. And so all of the projects and the budgets and everything we were going to talk about tonight, all of that originated from those original facility audit in 2014. So seems like light years ago, six years ago, and so, you know, enable, you know, our ability to accomplish what we set out to accomplish based on all that hard work upfront is something that the district can be really proud of. So in 2015, the bond passed. We got a picture of the community here, so very successful in that bond program. And we're going to move into some of the construction highlights, and then we'll finish on a summary. And I'm going to let Rick take over from here. Rick's been in the district all six years since the bond program started, you know, onsite, in the boardroom here, working every day to make sure these projects were a success. If anybody has, you know, any claim on our end to be, you know, critical in making this happen, it's Rick. So I'm going to let him kind of click through some of these, and then we'll finish on some of these as well.
Okay, I can see the dates on there. So in 2015, just as the bond was started, all we did for the first summer, not all we did, but what we did, boiler replacements in both Jefferson and Northeast. We took boilers out that were the size of school buses. It was a little bit unique because one of them was in a basement, so it had to come up and out a window over top coal shoots. A very interesting process, but very successful. We put in, you know, three low boilers to replace these giants that were down there, and the efficiency also, this was a lot about energy efficiency, so we also replaced the windows and the doors that led into these. They actually had single-pane glass going in these boiler rooms, so everything, you know, weather in and out, it was going with their, their, which one?
Right there.
Okay.
The red arrow.
There we go. Okay. Then also in the next project here, we started the demolition of Central. This was a unique project, too, because we were saving portions of it. So we had three portions of the building that we saved. So we had to do some real upfront work. We cut a slot through the building, built a wall in to protect what we were saving, and then tear it down. So this was, you know, a lengthy project, but it was also a fun project because regular demo, you just simply knock the thing down and haul it away. Here, we were trying to save it. The video did not start, did it? There we go. So there was a lot to this as far as, you know, like you said, we demo it all out, we have to, and then get rid of all the soils below, put good soils back in to build the And then we started the elementary school addition. So we had 10,000 square foot additions that we added to each of the elementaries. This team, Dave, Mike Mogenberg, all of Mike's staff, they all helped in this because there's, we are adding 10,000 square foot onto a building that is fully occupied with kids. So if you look at these videos of all the stuff that we had to put into place because safety is more important than getting that building up, right? So we had, everyone was unique. We came up with plans on how to separate them, everything from fire trucks, how do you get them in for emergencies and everything, and then contractors working hand in hand with us and our team to make sure, you know, that nothing, you could see the gaps between the fence, not even an accident to get to that fence because it was, you know, we are all about the safety. So each one was unique in where it's positioned and what we did with them. The next set of projects we did was the security projects. We touched every building that summer with secured entrances, put in nearly 300 cameras, hard access on all of the doors. The only building that got a minimal amount would have been Adams Elementary, where we just put an iPhone in simply because we were going to move the office, and that was one of the last projects. So one summer, we touched every building to make them secure. And then we have the STEM building. This is, this is titled, you know, Our First Day at the STEM Building. This building for me was just unbelievable. I mean, it was fantastic to work in a building that had such great spaces with the maker spaces and, you know, the studios in each one showcasing the contractors' work. So Daryl and I met with contractors long before we bid this out, and we set the standards of what we wanted to see, what Midland wanted to see. Exposing everything, there was great benefits to this, right? Everybody could see all that infrastructure you can't see when there's a ceiling, and they can see. But then to turn around and use it as a learning tool, I mean, this was special. And we've won three awards for this building, and we've done hundreds of tours. I think Mike's even, multiple countries have come to see this building. So this, for me, was a great, great work, watching these guys. We had 120 guys a day on average in that building, building this. So it was, for me, great fun. I mean, a lot of people think, don't think work is fun. That was fun. So then we also, as we were doing the elementary schools, we did them in three phases simply because we were taking certain spaces and turning them into different spaces. This particular was at Plymouth, was the, is the maker space. This was the media center. So we had to build the addition to give them the cafeterias, turn around and then take their cafeterias, make it the media centers, make the media center into the maker space. So every, every school had this, every elementary, but each one was specific to itself. I mean, different spaces, just, it was, every one took a lot of thought and planning from the whole team, which, Mike, you've got probably one of the best teams I've ever worked with is knowing what they wanted and how to get it. And so it just made it go so much smoother. This is another project that I had a great deal of fun helping on. This auditorium, you know, since it was 1936, and you walk in that door, and I know that the district didn't want to lose that, but neither did I. That was so beautiful to be able to walk into what still looks like the 1936 auditorium. But we put an extreme amount of changes in there. I mean, it's a state-of-the-art now. You know, you can't go anywhere, anywhere and find anything better than this, but we kept the look. Right on down to staining the outside, everybody thinks it's a brand-new building, but it is still 1936, and it's just beautiful. I had almost as much fun on this one as the STEM. The other thing, the next project that we did, which nobody ever gets to see these, were the virtual servers. This is actually, you know, another one of those that's very complicated, and where I was blessed with having Dave's crew helping with this. We were able to get this designed, bid out, and we did it where we replaced the one here at the admin first so we could get the district going by using the backup servers at Dow High. Once this one was up and operational, then we went to Dow High. You know, and again, these are things no one will ever see but you guys because you were part of it, but it just enhanced the technology here greatly. I'm sure Dave will agree with that. So as we were doing the remodeling during the summers, each of the schools, each of the elementaries, we did refreshes, just like what you're seeing here. So you're seeing a before and after. So we went in, and first big project was to move all the teachers out, put them into trailers, put them out in the parking lot. So then we would demo, put it all back together, what you see there, new drywall instead of accordion walls, new tack boards and whiteboards instead of chalkboards, new flooring. We also moved it all back in, and the teachers had approximately two weeks to go ahead and decorate and have their schools back together. It doesn't seem like much, but that's done in 80 days. So a lot of coordination, a lot of help from the school district to make all of this happen, and I think it all went, you know, fairly well. Nothing's perfect, but everything went well. And that's a picture of what you see that they could walk into the first day of school, you know, and they didn't have to work all of Labor Day to get there. This is the STEM building or addition that we put on at Woodcrest. This wasn't in the bond, but the Woodcrest has so many students, we didn't have a space that we could take or change into the maker space. So this addition was put on the following year after all the renovations and everything was done. It was also unique because just on the other side of that wall is the sidewalk where they walked into school. There was a lot of coordination, a lot of great help from contractors, let the buses come in, let everybody get into the school, then they would go to work. A lot of coordination before and after, but it came out to an extremely beautiful space. This is a before and after of Chestnut Hills Gymnasium converted into the media center. One of the things I did want to point out is that every year, when we got to a certain point, we'd take all the board members out and tour these schools. We scared them on a few, wondering if we were going to get done, yes, but again, when they walked in and, you know, it was done. It was, it's just, that's part of the magic of what we do. Two weeks before we're ready to turn it over, you're like, there's no way, and then you come back and it's done. This one here was very unique, which every school was. Every, every space we renovated had something unique, and here we were able to reclaim the parfaits floors, and they did a great job of staining them, turning this all into one of my favorite spaces that we put together, only because we were able to use that wood floor, not your standard every, you know, BCT or carpet. This, we utilized something that was there. Another large project that we worked on was the HVAC systems at Dow High. We put 36 units in that building, and if it was just a matter of picking it off the roof and putting another one on, that would have been something we could have done in one year. All of these were, we had to take the louvers out of the walls, take all of them out in pieces, and then each component came back in in approximately seven to eight pieces to put one unit back in, and then all of the piping. So we split it up into two summers due to codes where you have to have, the air handlers have to be running for school. So we did this in two years. And the first year, you know, had its bumps. The second year had a little bit too much water, but we got through all of that, and we were very successful. And again, everything's so unique here in Midland, which to me makes it even more interesting to do. Typically, you just set them on the roof, and these all in and out, cross the roof and through halls. Also throughout, not just the one summer, we did an extreme amount of asphalt at both high schools and at Adams, but totally taking out asphalt and concrete, we did over a million square feet in this time. Not necessarily unique, but we did run into some fairly unsuitable soils in Midland, believe it or not. But again, this is just what we do, and you have a lot of improved bus drop-offs, a lot of car drop-offs, you know, we did a lot of separations and made it a lot safer. Another really nice accomplishment was your media centers at the middle schools and at the high schools. That summer, we went in and gutted these things all out, and we put them all back together. And when we got all done, what I really enjoyed was every school I walked into before this year was packed. They all loved those spaces. Those students are in there, they're studying, they're, just seem to enjoy it because it's so inviting. And I know that you've received some recognition for these media centers, too. So great design, great space, and really happy to see the books. Another very large project was the science labs and the chemistry labs at the high school. So this one, I mean, you go in and you demo these out, and then you have to put it all back together. We did find some unique situations in here. They actually still had lead piping for plumbing, which is way out there, a long, long time ago. And of course, like asbestos, it costs us money to get rid of it. So all of the plumbing has changed, all of the fixtures, countertops, casework, they are just absolutely beautiful. New chemical storage rooms, all connected to proper cabinets, proper ventilation. This was a home run. Beautiful, beautiful labs. Also here in 2019, and we're finishing this up now, we did the wireless upgrades. So we went in and every wireless access, access, access point, I'm sorry, I'm going to blame the mask, was changed out. And then what you're seeing here is there's approximately five closets per school that are all, have all the switches and everything that runs the data in here. We completely gutted them out, and as you can see on the left, that's what they used to look like, and now on the right is what they've done after they cleaned them up. So this is going to help with the maintenance, troubleshooting, everything, you know, everything's neat now and a lot easier to take care of. It also, your technology here now is just top-notch because everything has been, was This, February 2020, we turned over the last elementary school's addition at Adams. So, you know, we have 50-some thousand square foot of additions we put on just the elementaries alone. One of the big things here that I'd like to point out is that each one of them got new serving lines and new kitchens, and I hear nothing but good news out of that. Hot lunches, it's quicker now, a lot easier to control, and they're just, everybody's happy. The cooks are happy, these kids are happy. We can't do any better than that. We also have completed this last summer was the last of the controls at Dow High in all 36 units. This picture is kind of a representation of all of the components, piping, electrical, controls, everything that it takes to get there, but now you're fully functioning. The thing, talking with Mike Mogenberg, everything's working very well. Usually, we have something to tweak. We have not had that problem here. Everything is working very well. The stadium, this one here kind of speaks for itself, too. We redid the turf here this summer, and we resurfaced the track again. The contractor came in, did a fantastic job resurfacing. We also added a parking lot for the, over by the ball diamonds for the extra parking that we get at your famous game that happens once a year. You also got a new press box. Right now, we do have out to bid the bleacher replacement for the home side and turning the visitor side into ADA requirements, fixing those. That is out to bid as we speak. Dow High, landscape project. This is probably one of the nicest-looking improvements from what we had. When I first walked the state of Michigan in for an inspection at Dow High to look at the secured entrance, he stopped me, the state, and said, "You will fix this concrete." So this was, I love the design. I think French did a great job with the design. Now we've only got two sets of stairs to maintain and still meet all the egress. We also fixed all the EFS around the entire building and repainted it, and the entire building now has high-efficiency windows and doors, which is huge. You could feel the wind through those before. Now we have low-e glass, thermally broken frames, so everything is now energy efficient there. Okay, over to the middle schools. This summer, we did some gym renovations. The big one for Jefferson was they got rid of the old wooden bleachers that took several people to open and close. The new ones now are just like Northeast where they're aluminum and the plastic, all motorized, worked fantastic. Refinished the floors, new wall pads, and new backstops throughout. And we also, for safety, we recertified all of the backdrops because they're still, they were very old, and now we've got to ensure that they're very safe to operate. Also, this last summer at the middle schools, we enhanced all the front of classrooms. This is also something we're doing this year with the high schools. As you can see in the picture here, we've taken the front This is probably one of the nicest looking improvements from what we had. When I first walked the state of Michigan in for an inspection at Dow High to look at the secured entrance, he stopped me, the state, and said, you will fix this concrete. So this was, I love the design. I think French did a great job with the design. Now we've only got two sets of stairs to maintain and still meet all the egress. We also fixed all the EFS around the entire building and repainted it. And the entire building now has high efficiency windows and doors, which is huge. You could feel the wind through those before. Now we have low E glass, thermally broken frames, so everything is now energy efficient there. Okay, over to the middle schools. This summer we did some gym renovations. The big one for Jefferson was they got rid of the old wooden bleachers that took several people to open and close. The new ones now are, are just like Northeast where they're aluminum and the plastic, all motorized, worked fantastic. Refinished the floors, new wall pads and new backstops throughout. And we also, for safety, we recertified all of the backdrops because they're still, they were very old and now we've got to ensure that they're very safe to operate. Also this last summer at the middle schools, we enhanced all the front of classrooms. This is also something we're doing this year with the high schools. As you can see in the picture here, we, we've taken the front of classroom, we put in a new whiteboard, intact boards where we're replacing chalkboards. We also put in new projectors and sound systems enhancing so they don't have to yell at the students, they can talk to the students, which everything, I have heard no complaints on them. I think everybody's enjoying that great improvement for the classrooms.
Summarize. Rick has a way of making that sound easier than it actually is. So we're going to just kind of go through some high level stuff, some summaries, just some points of pride on the projects. So, so far to date, we've completed 86 million plus dollars in projects. That little round circle on the bottom was kind of tallying that up through time, showing the percent complete. And we're 80% complete with all Series One and Series Two projects. All $73 million in Series One construction projects are complete. And as I go through these slides, you'll see at the bottom that it says to visit the website. We've got a full listing of all this information, projects that were completed. Again, going back to 2014, those lists are listed there identifying all the work that's been done, right down to the individual projects. We've contracted with over, we've completed over 100 contracts to 60 different contractors with nearly 90% local participation. You know, this was a big goal of the district under Mike Shero's leadership and Brad Blazey's, Mr. Blazey's. You know, this was a, an area in which, from the day one that we got out here, you know, we were basically told we've got to increase the participation of the local contractors. And, you know, we're very happy with, you know, the percentages that we've been able to attain. That other 10% in most cases would have been, you know, like unique contractors. So for example, a track contractor, a track surface, those types of things. So we've had a lot of participation, a lot of participation and a lot of, you can see by 100 contracts with 60 contractors, we had a lot of repeat contractors as well. You know, that meant that they were coming to a job they thought was well organized, they were being paid at the appropriate times. And so we're, we're very proud of those numbers. So what's new? We completed $30 million and 120,000 square feet of new school facilities since 2015. The district completed the first ground up STEM themed elementary school and over 55,000 square feet in additions. As Rick mentioned, those additions, excuse me, those additions freed up space additionally inside the building, so they were able to, you know, expand those opportunities with maker spaces, STEM spaces. So those additions were more than just the additions that they, that they were designed Renovations, 50 million plus dollars in renovations have been completed since 2015. So we've got a big list here. Every elementary school has seen it, over $6 million in renovations. The middle schools have received over $5 million thus far. Both the middle schools and the high schools still have significant work to go. The high schools have received over $12 million in completed projects. Central auditorium has received over $4.5 million in improvements. Over 220 new mechanical units and 18 boilers have been replaced district wide. I mean, what an investment that is. I mean, for the next 20 years to have, you know, that level of equipment replaced. So, you know, Mike's, you can tell by his comments on his car, he's an infrastructure guy, so, you know, making sure we identify those. And you'll see in the, you know, some of the additional projects, you know, this was, you know, what was in the bond wasn't enough, we did more as well. Over a million square feet of asphalt and concrete have been replaced. Much of that has been full depth replacements, so not just resurfacing, I mean, right down to the subgrade. Over 450,000 square feet of flooring has been installed since 2015. District-wide access control, video surveillance and PA systems that have been installed. Really a huge benefit to have those installed district wide. Districts don't often have the opportunity to replace everything that's been done on several of these projects. So that's that consistency in systems and softwares that, you know, just increases Dave's ability to manage those systems. Over 10,900 staff and student devices have been image deployed and maintained. Most of that work again falls to Dave and his staff. Classroom technology has been completed in over 280 classrooms, including projectors and sound enhancement systems. The balance of those will happen this summer, so all of the classrooms in, in the district will eventually receive new classroom technology. The district's network and wireless infrastructure have been upgraded, has replaced 65 passenger, or excuse me, four 65 passenger lift buses and 11 77 passenger lift buses, passenger buses. So what projects, what additional projects have been done? So we've completed over $10 million in additional projects. And again, you can see a full listing of these on the district's website. But that original, what was originally in the bond program was to build the new Central Park Elementary. The STEM themed version of that was an additional project, so there was a lot of additional investment into that building to create that. Woodcrest STEM Classroom addition, over $2 million in additional mechanical equipment, an additional $1 million improvements at the central auditorium. So as we went through those planning sessions, there was like a strong desire from, you know, that, that, you know, from the auditorium folks that they really wanted to enhance some of the sound systems and, and so we were able to put additional $1 million in there. And so Midland Public Schools as of today still has over $4 million in bid savings remaining to complete additional projects. So that list is only going to continue to grow. So what's still to come? There's still $18 million in project and work yet to be completed. We mentioned the Midland Stadium Bleacher Replacement Project, additional mechanical and controls. The district will also have a district-wide building management system, controls, again, which is just another tool that's just fantastic for the district to not only save money, which is important, but also the comfort in the classroom too, which is equally important. And so having that resource and Mr. Mogenberg and his ability to manage the, all that new equipment. High school classroom technology, additional flooring, interior doors, windows and architectural components, a lot of select replacements through the high schools yet to come. Gym renovations at Midland High School, restroom renovations throughout the district, district-wide phone system, and that's, you know, to name a few. And Series Three is yet to be sold, which will be sold in 2023, and that will generate an additional $8 million in revenue for additional projects, tech equipment and bus purchases. And that's our summary. With that, if anybody's had any questions, we'd love to answer some questions. We've spent a lot of time out there on those projects. We'll be happy to share any more, you know, any more information or experience we've had.
I don't have any questions, but it was wonderful as board members to be able to walk through with you guys and see the construction as it was, as our buildings were getting revamped and, and see the quality and, and workmanship that went into our buildings. So appreciate all the hard work and it sure is exciting to see it all together.
Absolutely.
Yeah, looking back, it doesn't seem like very long ago that we passed that bond. And then to look at all of the things we've accomplished since then is just wonderful for our community.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just as excited. Having seen this from start to where we are now, it's just been kind of a tremendous evolution that we've gone through. And you guys have been, I think, on top of it and you've been an absolute pleasure, at least from a board member's standpoint, from my standpoint, to work with. I felt very informed the entire way. I didn't feel at all like we were ever lagging behind or not getting top value for our dollar. I mean, geez, $10 million in extra projects, that just shows how well you guys have done managing this and saving money for our taxpayers, which is tremendously important to all of us up here. And we still have $4 million in savings to figure out what to do with and we'll certainly put it to good use, but guys, absolutely fantastic job. Thank you so much.
I'll, I'll take the gratitude, but most of that, you know, falls on, you know, Mike Shero's, you know, leadership and FFO committee. In a lot of ways, we couldn't be as successful as we feel we've been, you know, without you guys. So yeah, much appreciated though.
Anybody else?
Mike has a knack for saving money.
Was there any issue Darrell with, when you had to disassemble the rooftop units? Because typically, if you have to take a packaged unit apart into seven pieces that's brand new, that manufacturer is going to have some heartburn.
So those were designed to come in pieces.
Okay.
So they weren't packaged equipment, so the air handle equipment, the engineers spent a lot of time out there looking, and I wish the pictures could do justice how tight some of those quarters are. So if we're taking out 20 units, you've got to put, you know, the first one in and then bring the second one in and bring the third one in, and you've got to bring those in and assemble those in pieces. And then you have to pipe it, sheet metal it in a rotation that guys aren't all on top of each other. So a lot of thought by the engineers up front to make sure all that equipment fit. You know, we've been fortunate enough, you know, to have a great team of engineers as well as some of the support from some of the suppliers, working with the engineers to assure that all that fit the way it did.
Darrell mentioned we, 23 were designed to be placed or 21 of them, that number, then we added with savings, all of them, did it over two years. We also purchased equipment all in one year, figuring there'd be possible escalation in the price into the second year, we were able to store them and keep them in. So it really was, Rick went through it quickly, but it might've been one of the more difficult projects on, on all of what we've done to date.
Yeah, lost a lot of sleep that first summer coming into the start of school. I mean, just the complexity of getting all that in there, piping it, I mean, the, the contractors, you know, you get to a point where you've been working in that tunnel for two and a half months trying to get that in and it gets, it gets, you know, it's complicated. So hats off to those guys for pulling it off. In a lot of ways, we, you know, we do the upfront planning and set the table for them, but they have to deliver, so. But to Mike's point, that $2 million in additional mechanical equipment we referenced was, was for the most part the Dow High equipment, which, you know, going back in at some point later after we've done it, probably would have been a bad idea. So the kind of the original thought of just handpicking the worst ones. So fortunate, we were fortunate to have the savings to go in and tackle all of them at once.
We got another round of them at Midland High for this summer. But we don't have to go across the room.
Yeah.
Well done.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thanks guys.
Thank you.
I think we're ready to go back to Jennifer Service.
All right, thanks.
Jennifer, you with us? And just for the, I can move it back to add a three point up.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Are we good? All right, awesome. I'm on the phone, but thank you for your patience with technology. Let me go ahead and share my screen. All right, can you now see early literacy in MPS?
Yes.
This was a really telling picture to capture early literacy in MPS during a pandemic. So draw your attention to our image on the first slide. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having us tonight. My name is Jen Service and I am the Elementary Curriculum and Instructional Specialist for MPS. I am joined tonight by our amazing early literacy specialist team, Shannon Panastic, Kim Welter, Annalisa Christensen and Tricia Clancy. We are here to share a sneak peek into early literacy within MPS. Our literacy specialists will share information on the MBE Early Literacy Essentials, coaching, curriculum implementation, the read by grade three law, and their work around meeting individual student needs. I would like to begin tonight by asking you to take a few minutes to reflect. I ask that you think about yourself as a reader and a writer. What is your earliest memory of being a reader and a writer? And finally, how do you use literacy skills in your day-to-day life, both personally and professionally? As you know, literacy is so much a part of who we are, how we function, and how we navigate and succeed in our day-to-day duties and responsibilities. Our collective mission tonight is to convey our MPS literacy mission to you. All students will become literate and have essential skills to be successful. To begin our presentation, I would like to introduce you first to Annalisa Christensen, our literacy specialist at Central Park, the Pre-Primary Center and Plymouth Elementary. Thank you, Jen. The K3 Early Literacy Essentials are one component along with coaching and curriculum implementation that helps strengthen core instruction for all students. All of us want children throughout Michigan to be successful. An important part of student success centers around proficiency in reading. That's why a group of education experts developed new approaches for teachers to use in the classroom. This group of education experts created the Literacy Essentials. Literacy Essentials are documents designed for Michigan educators to improve childhood literacy development. The Literacy Essentials provide research-proven effective approaches to markedly improve literacy skills. Using the Literacy Essentials with every child in every classroom, A) will help improve literacy among our youngest learners. They include 10 research-based practices that if they are implemented every day, will have a positive impact on literacy development. They should be used to guide instructional practices in the elementary classroom. I would like to introduce Tricia Clancy, who is going to talk about coaching in the
Thank you, Annalisa. In Midland Public Schools, we support teachers in implementing the essential practices that Annalisa referred to through coaching. Coaching is job embedded professional development that has a significant impact on teacher practice. One analysis of 60 studies shows that coaching has a larger impact on teacher practice than the difference between novice teachers and veteran teachers. In Midland Public Schools, all teachers will receive coaching, including the teachers teaching in our virtual academy, because all teachers deserve high-quality, job embedded professional development. Most often, this professional development is delivered through a coaching cycle. To begin a coaching cycle, the teachers, the principal and the coach analyze student achievement data. From that data, they set a student achievement goal. Let me give you an example. Perhaps in one building, the third grade students need to improve their ability to make inferences from fictional texts. When set as an achievement goal, the coach then provides professional development around the essential practices that will help improve that area of literacy. Once they provide the professional development, they also go into the classroom. Depending on the teacher's expertise, they may model the implementation of those practices or they may simply observe the teacher as they implement the practices and provide feedback. The teacher and the coaches work together until the teacher's practices have shifted and the student achievement shows that progress has been made. Then the coaches move on to work with another set of teachers around another literacy goal. Through effective coaching cycles, we are building capacity in our teachers and strengthening our core instruction. Here to talk about another way we strengthen core instruction is Shannon Panastic.
Thanks, Tricia. Another way that we strengthen core instruction is through curriculum implementation. One of the areas that we are focusing on is our upcoming implementation of the units of study. We are excited that these units of study will provide us with a consistent approach for research-based best practices throughout the district. The workshop approach that is used in the unit is aligned with the essential literacy practices. These units are based on years of research and are constantly revived to keep current with changing understandings of how children learn. To give you a little information on the timeline of this project, there was a major change proposal approved in the 2019-2020 school year. This year, however, things were put on hold due to the pandemic. The literacy team still attended a week-long conference over the summer on the writing units of study. This opportunity provided us with the additional knowledge to help support our teachers with the upcoming implementation process. Next school year, we plan on implementing the writing units of study and then the following year, we will move on to implementing the reading and phonics units of study. Not only do we strengthen core instruction to impact all of our students, we also work to meet individual needs. We do this in several ways. The recent grade three law and the creation of the individual reading improvement plan are both driven by data. Midland Public Schools adopted MWEA as our initial screener assessment this year. This was an assessment tool that was on the approved list created by the Michigan Department of Education, which replaced the use of DIBL. This assessment has allowed us to gather data on all of our students. The data gives us the ability to make instructional decisions that are best for our students and differentiate our instructions to target the learner. Next, Jen Service will share information about the refi grade Next, Jen Service will share information about the REAP by Grade Three Law.
Thanks, Shannon. In 2016, the Michigan Legislature passed the READ by Grade Three Law, Public Act 306. The purpose of this law is to ensure that all students exiting third grades are at or above grade level proficiency. This law also ensures extra support for K-3 students who are not reading at grade level. We know that students need strong reading skills to support their learning in all core subject areas. This is truly a partnership between teachers, students, the school community, and families. We encourage families to read at home with their children, to tell favorite stories, to ask questions, and to encourage their children to write about what they have read. Information about the READ by Grade Three Law has been shared in multiple ways with our MPS families. Elementary building principals sent a district letter home to third-grade families on Friday, November 6. We shared information in the November 9 Community, which included links to meals for families as well as tips for helping at home. And all of our DK through third-grade classroom teachers shared information with families at the elementary parent-teacher conferences on November 11. We know that together, teachers and families can ensure that all of our young learners achieve reading success. And finally, tonight, I would like to turn it over to Kim Welter, our literacy specialist at Woodcrest and Chestnut Hills, to share the Individual Reading Improvement Plan Timeline, more commonly referred to as the IRIP.
Thank you, Jen. As Jen stated, I'm going to talk about the individualized reading improvement plans. The first thing we do is we begin with assessment and identifying the students. We then create the plan and meet with the parents, and the plan is implemented. We assess all K-3 students three times per year with our benchmark assessment in an effort to identify struggling readers or who are sometimes referred to as our striving readers and writers. Midland Public Schools uses NWEA Percentage Score as the initial screener, along with a developmental reading assessment, or DRA, to dig deeper for more information into what is going on with the reader. We are required by law to have an Individual Reading Improvement Plan, or IRIP, created within 30 days of the testing period. This plan is created in partnership with a student teacher, the literacy specialist, the resource room teacher if needed, the principal, and the families of the students. The plan includes data from testing, the instructional plan, including specific interventions and strategies that match the need of the child, along with the frequency and duration for the intervention or strategy. These students are also progress-monitored weekly to ensure the effectiveness of the intervention. Another very important part of the plan is the READ at Home section. Families are provided with extended learning opportunities to strengthen their students' reading skills. This is in addition to the instructional interventions that are being done at school. Once the plan has been created, the teacher meets with the family to go over and discuss the plan in the fall, after the plan has been created and at the conclusion of the school year. The plan is updated with each benchmark assessment. We also continue to monitor these students well beyond the years that follow, even beyond the third grade. I also want to point out that we do place students on a reading plan in January if they are showing need at that time. So it is possible for a student not to have a reading plan in the fall, but then to have one created in January based on the data that's presented to us, collected, and reviewed during our data meetings. As we've stated throughout our presentation, creating this plan is a collaborative effort between the literacy team and the families. The reading improvement plans are student-focused and individualized to meet the needs of the students with research-based interventions and strategies. It is important to remember that this is a process, and a document won't make a child a better reader or writer, but it will enable us to collaborate with one another and with the families to ensure that their child is literate. This takes us to our next slide, which is a quote from Lucy Cockens. "To teach well, we do not need more techniques and strategies as much as we need a vision of what is essential." This ties everything we have presented together. The essential practices guide what we must teach, and we have to be intentional to meet the needs of all of our students, especially our striving readers and writers. To reiterate our MPS mission, all students will become literate and have essential skills to be successful. Thank you very much for listening, and now we are going to take comments and questions.
I have a question. So the summer writing units of study that you participated in over the summer, after going to that, what do you expect to see, or what are some of the outcomes that you're seeing from that?
So I'll start with that, Pam. One of the things that we really found beneficial from attending that conference was really, we heard from teachers from all over the world that have implemented these units, and really talked through the strategy of implementation, and that sometimes that less is more, because these units are pretty comprehensive, include a lot of information, and at times could tend to be overwhelming. So we really had the opportunity to ask a lot of questions about the how and why of implementing and the support needed through professional development from our teachers, which they said is the most valuable piece. We'll have trainers coming in at the beginning of the year and mid-year, and then we'll be able to then continue support with our literacy specialists, who have also received the training, to really be hands-on and really be able to coach in the classroom to support teachers with the rollout. So that's what I would say, that we were really given guidance on how to roll them out and how to really support teachers throughout that.
Excellent.
Jen, I have a question.
Anybody want to speak to that? Okay, go ahead.
And anybody can answer this. Given our current educational environment, what adaptations are being made or implemented to ensure that the READ by Grade Three requirement is met, and how are the IRIPs being adapted to fit a virtual environment versus a face-to-face environment?
Hold on one second, we're gonna switch places. Well, one thing we've done is obviously with our virtual teachers, we've met with them virtually, we've met with the parents virtually if they were doing virtual conferences and shared the IRIPs that way. We also meet with the virtual teachers to make sure that their interventions and strategies are being delivered the way that they're supposed to and with fidelity and according to what the reading plan states. So it's been a collaborative effort for sure. This year's been a lot different than what we've experienced in the past, but we are doing our best to get everything met at this time. Does anyone else have anything to say about that? No? I think that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one more question.
Of course.
You talked about reading and phonics being the focus for next year. So the summer writing units of study was this past summer. Next year, we'll be reading and phonics. Is that kind of a shift in what we're doing?
So this coming year, next school year, we'll be writing, and then the year after that, reading and phonics. It's a slight shift, it's not a huge shift, in that we're still teaching the children how, you know, how to read, how to write. And I think the biggest change with the Lucy Cockens unit is how integrated all those subjects are together. So the children aren't really learning things in isolation. If they learn something in isolation, immediately it's put back into the context of reading and writing. So it really helps the children transfer anything that they learned in isolation to that process of reading and writing. And I think that's really one of the biggest strengths of Lucy Cockens units of study.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate all of you. Thank you for joining us tonight, and thank you for doing such a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And they adapted very quickly to technology that wasn't working, so good job.
Okay, that puts us at 3.3 shining stars. Mr. Sherrill?
We have our two shining stars for November, and the first one is Jamie, hopefully I say this right, Hareska. Jamie has been part of the MPS team for 10 years before coming to MPS. She was a special education teacher at the Grass Lake Community Schools in Clinton County, RESA. Jamie joined the MPS team in 2010 as a special education teacher at HH Dow High. Jamie's 10 years with MPS evolvement spent teaching Dow High Chargers. In addition to teaching, she also has been a class sponsor as well as girls' track and field coach. Jamie earned both her bachelor's and master's degrees from Grand Valley State University. Ms. Hareska was nominated by the MPS student and colleagues. Among their comments were the following. "Jamie goes above and beyond for our department in creating helpful tools for teachers and students. She creates training videos when teachers are not available to meet in person, tracking forums, and is willing to sit down in person to help on our own team. Jamie has been an incredible help to our department in providing meetings to assist colleagues and completing mandated forums during the shutdown, as well as providing hours of assistance in helping many of us develop our Canvas classrooms and all of the intricacies involved with that. Those texts take so much time, are so well-done, and are so helpful. She does it out of the loyalty for the school, the teachers, administrators, parents, and especially our special-needs students. She goes above and beyond by letting us hang out in her classroom after school every day and get our work done. If you have homework questions, she tries her hardest to help with them. Overall, she always goes above and beyond and always has a positive attitude that she brings every day to school with a smile." Congratulations, Jamie. Our second shining star is Kimberly Crump. Kimberly joined the MPS team in 2019 as a sign language interpreter at Seabird Elementary School. She holds her interpreter certification from the state of Michigan. Kimberly was nominated for a shining star by a Seabird parent. Among their comments were the following. "Not only does Kim interpret for my child, she seeks to make sure he's understood and desires to see him succeed. She is creating curriculum to help him increase his American Sign Language knowledge. Kim will take the time to communicate with us if there are concerns, and also when there are victories. She helps him to navigate both the hearing and the deaf culture. Kim goes well behind expectations to see our son excel. Very grateful for her and her work with our son." Congratulations, Kimberly.
Nice.
All right, thanks, Mike. Okay, that brings us to item number four, Request to Address the Board. Before we get into our guests who are patiently waiting, if you guys could just indulge me for a couple minutes while I give you a bit of a DEI update as of November 16, 2020. So I'm just gonna read this kind of summary to bring everybody up to speed as to where the district is at and what's been done in light of our educational environment with the pandemic and the almost day-to-day changes that we're going through. So here we go. "The commitment to transform to an anti-racist district requires a dual focus on individual introspection, learning, reflection, and growth, coupled with the structural and cultural changes that must occur organizationally. The DEI strategy and current work aligns with this dual focus." The information that I'm gonna read is a high-level summary of what's currently underway in the district. "All teachers have engaged in DEI-centered professional learning during every PD so far this year, PD Professional Development Day, and this is planned for the remaining PD days. Some schools have extended the learning with their school PD time. There's a relaunch active alley program in all schools, increasing the likelihood of reporting DEI-related matters and increasing student support. The following action teams have launched and are engaged in their plan of work. Restorative practices offer a deeper, more consistent implementation across the district. Adoption of new curriculum materials are revised processes within the lenses of DEI. Review of current curriculum materials, this is a use of a process and tool to uncover current pieces that require reconsideration. Human resource recruitment processes. Development of a perception survey. DEI skill sets for student-family curriculum development. The development of the new continuous improvement process and the multi-tiered system of support framework has all been done with Equity as its cornerstone. Every school leader has completed an inclusive leadership learning and coaching experience and completed the White Fragility book study. Each school has initial plans for the development of a DEI staff team for actions at the school level. Some schools have already launched their team. Currently working with principals to identify two to three staff per school to receive training and serve in DEI leadership capacities for future activities. DEI is a standing agenda item at every Board of Education Committee meeting. We are currently in the initial development phase of an Equity Audit Framework." So guys, that's kind of where we're at in terms of what we've accomplished since August, right? Is that when we adopted the proclamation? Yes. I think we've made some good strides. Certainly, we're not done, and we've got a lot of work to do, but I'm very proud of what we've accomplished and what the administrative team has accomplished so far. You guys have really done well. So all of that said, we're gonna move into our Request to Address the Board. We have with us tonight Bruce Race and Fred Honorcamp. Honorcamp or Hornercamp?
Honor.
Honorcamp, okay. Gentlemen, you have the floor.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you for joining us tonight.
I'm sorry?
Thank you for joining us tonight.
Oh, thank you, it's our pleasure. As mentioned, I am Bruce Race. I'm the president of the Kowasie Kwanis Foundation, and as you might guess, we're associated with the Kwanis Club of the same name, one of two Kwanis Clubs here in Midland. With me tonight are some of our foundation board members. Duane Townley, Vice President, Gordon Rogers, Secretary, Alex Raponis, Treasurer, and Fred Honorcamp, Project Director for our Chromebook replacement project. As I was sitting here, it came to me that two members of our foundation board have spouses who at one time sat where you're sitting tonight. Duane Townley, the Vice President, Duane Townley, served as a member of the Board of Education, as did Nan Scotchdepol, wife of Dick Scotchdepol, who's a member of our board. Kwanis, as you probably know, is an international service organization with the motto of improving the world, one community, and one child at a time. So much of what we do, both as a club and as a foundation, is focused on helping kids. So much for the commercial. On May 12, Superintendent Sherrill was the guest speaker at our weekly Kwanis Club. At that time, he shared with us the logistical and financial challenges of educating our kids under the constraints and pressures of COVID-19. One of the several things that became very apparent to us that night was the absolute dependence, the dependence of the Midland Public Schools upon Chromebooks in order to provide virtual learning. Exactly one week later, the floods came. Soon after, our foundation got together to discuss what, if anything, we could do to address some of the problems and losses from the floods. We talked with Captain Brian Goodwill at the Salvation Army, who's a member of our club. We talked about replacing bicycles that had been washed away. We talked about replacing a number of things. And then someone said, "Why don't we talk to Superintendent Sherrill?" So we did. We called Mike's office, sat down with him, and it's then and there that we became aware that 250 Chromebooks had been lost in the floods at an estimated cost of $70,000. We got back together and discussed various ways we could help. Frankly, we'd never taken on a project this large, and we knew that if we would, we would only be able to provide a portion of the amount, and thus we'd have to reach out to the community. We'd have to ask others to pitch in to help us. And we'd be doing so at a time when we were keenly aware that there were many, many, many needs in Midland at that time, all requiring financial support from the community. Could we succeed? Frankly, we were scared. We didn't want to fail, but determined, but apprehensive, we decided to press ahead. We named Fred Honorcamp to act as a project director, as he'd been an early supporter of the Chromebook idea. Each member of the board assumed a very specific role. I was gonna do this, Fred was gonna do that, et cetera, et cetera. Fred met with Sharon Moore- Fred met with Sharon Mortensen at the Midland Area Community Foundation, and we decided to establish a fund there. We kicked it off in that very room where you're sitting tonight with a donation from our foundation of $10,000, followed up quickly by additional donations for our Michigan Kuanis Children's Fund and from the Midland Evening Kuanis Clubs Foundation, and the fund began to grow. We then reached out to other foundations, other clubs, churches, businesses, friends, neighbors, anyone we could talk to, and the fund continued to grow. We quickly began to see what can happen, what can happen when there is a good cause and a good community that pulls together to address it. I guess I'll stop here. I'm stealing Fred's thunder, but before I do so, let me make a couple more comments. We're here tonight to celebrate what for us has been a heartwarming example of community collaboration. Although, don't be mistaken, we are very proud to have initiated this project. We are absolutely thrilled by the way the community has supported it. So, thanks to many. I'm happy to get an op tonight. We're ready to issue a check for $70,000, as we understand the Chromebooks are just now beginning to arrive. And now, let me introduce our project director, our team quarterback, Fred Honor Camp. Thank you. It's been an honor working.
Thank you, Bruce. I'm humbled when I listened to the school infrastructure bond report, and they were talking millions and millions. But Bruce said, this is a big project for us. We normally are in the $1,000, $2,000 range. To take on something like $70,000 was just something beyond our horizon. We got a lot of help from Sharon Mortensen and Emily Schaefer at the Foundation, at the Midland Area Community Foundation, but we also had help from little people, big and wide. For example, John and Jennifer Went, they were flooded out by the flood, and yet their moral and financial support kicked us off. We had people that were, the Townley, I think we mentioned Kerry and Dwayne earlier, they rallied the retired school community, superintendents and teachers alike, to pitch in whatever they could, either in time, talent, or in contributions. We had a friend of mine in Baltimore sent us a check. The Santa School graduates who love Midland sending checks. We have checks from around the country to help support the children of Midland. I am proud of the fact that we've raised $70,000 for our 250 Chromebooks. Thank you.
Cots?
I am just honored that you came out to the board meeting tonight and shared the story with us. Often, we see, you know, a bullet point in our board agenda, but tonight, we had the honor of hearing about the story and how you worked together to bring this to our schools, and we are deeply grateful and honored to receive this wonderful gift. It just really means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very, very heartwarming, Bruce and Fred. Thank you both. Really, words are insufficient, I think, at this point, but you're impacting 250 kids, and that means the world to us as a board and to us as administrators of this district. So my hat's off to you, and we are very, very grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Gentlemen, thank you. We will move to our next guest. We have Katie Sterns, anti-racist expectations at Midland High School and for the district. Katie, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Thank you for joining us.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Kuanis Club. That is amazing. I wish I had $70,000 to add to that, but thank you so much. That was pretty awesome. My name is Katie Sterns. I reside at 4131 Cruz Drive in the Plymouth School neighborhood. I speak to you this evening as a proud 1989 graduate of Midland High School, a 24-year veteran of social studies and English teacher at Midland High School, a parent of a current chemic, and a parent of a 2019 Midland High graduate. Science, math, social studies, English, art, accounting, building trades, marketing, band, choir, introduction to engineering, health and wellness, and computer technology, hybrid, face-to-face, virtual, and Canvas. Teachers are charged with presenting new information, perspectives, and empathy in a multitude of content areas in many different ways. It is our job, and we embrace it. Education and knowledge is challenging. Teachers are supposed to expand minds, push for critical and creative thinking, and at times encourage students to think beyond what they know and beyond their own stories. In addition to content, we are asked to establish and protect diversity, inclusion, and equity in all classes, clubs, and activities, all while supporting and nurturing the social and emotional well-being of all of our students. With this, we must challenge and not accept bigotry, prejudice, and intolerance in our school or classrooms. Those go against the very fabric of education and educators. At Midland High School, we know we cannot eliminate racism, bigotry, and prejudice with one lesson or with one year of instruction, but what we can and will do is protect our students from both blatant and covert acts of hate speech, hate symbols, and harassment of any kind. Whether it is the Confederate flag or the newly commandeered white supremacist "okay" sign of white power, Midland High staff will not tolerate these acts or any other acts of hate speech in the walls of our school. If a student's family or friends choose to display those symbols or speak in such a manner outside the walls of Midland High, we can't necessarily stop it. Although it is my hope that through education, our students will not behave or display this bigotry outside of school, my hope is that education, tolerance, and anti-racism win outside the classrooms of Midland High. No matter how the district administration deals with the issue of racism, sexism, and harassment, I want to be clear that within the walls of Midland High School, open-mindedness, kindness, and respect is what will be tolerated, displayed, and celebrated. Education is meant to challenge and expand thinking in a variety of areas, and it starts with the willingness to hear other perspectives and evaluate your own thinking and beliefs. At Midland High, we will continue to provide emotional safety so all students can participate, question, learn, and be positive members of our school and larger community. When the emotional and mental safety of one student is compromised by the bigotry and prejudice of another, it is the duty of the teacher, the school, and the entire district to not only protect the student, but to educate the perpetrator on what is expected of being a chemic and a human being. Bottom line, we will teach our content. Bottom line, we will challenge bigotry and hate speech. And bottom line, we will hold chemics and the districts accountable to our DEI proclamation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Katie. We really appreciate your time tonight, and we agree with you in that the DEI proclamation is a critical piece of our structure now. So I hear everything that you're saying, and thank you so much. Very well received. Okay. Katie, thank you. Before we get to our next speaker, I do want to say that the board, just to remind everybody, we are here to listen. We are listening to everything that you're saying, but we are not going to engage our speakers tonight in any kind of active conversation. If there is a question for the board, we will certainly get that information for you by way of an official response. We just, we don't know what may come up tonight, so it's hard to invite everybody to engage the board in conversation. So I hope you guys understand that, and we certainly appreciate that. So with that being said, Stephanie Andrezen, are you with us? I think she's on mute. I can't see.
She doesn't have audio? She doesn't have any audio connected?
Can she call in, like?
Send her a message, she don't respond?
Just, you want to repeat that, maybe she can hear you?
Yes. Stephanie, we can't hear you. Your audio is apparently not working.
Okay.
Well, you looked like it was off there for a second.
Is it working now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Stephanie, thank you for joining. We appreciate you being with us tonight. We appreciate you being with us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me have a moment to speak. I wanted to talk about COVID-19 and specifically the upcoming due date for second semester selection for face-to-face hybrid or virtual enrollment. What I had planned to talk about obviously has changed a little bit with the announcements that have come out in the past couple of days with MPS's intention to go remote beginning next week and not return to school until January 18th, and then, of course, the governor's announcement. Right now, I can tell you that I'm a parent of a sixth-grade student at Northeast. She's currently in the hybrid program, and that was what we chose at the time, thinking that it would be the best option. And I can attest to the goal of MPS to keep students in face-to-face instruction. My daughter is currently doing very well in her in-person classes and struggling with the virtual portion. We would like to have her return for face-to-face in second semester, but what isn't clear to me as a parent is what metrics or what thresholds we may have in place for determining if it's safe to do so. I don't know if we are looking at the positivity rate in our community, the quarantine rate at the school's local hospital capacity, or if it's some culmination of all of those. I guess my concern is that we're making decisions now that are due in one week without being able to project where we're going to be at with the virus in two months from now. And I'd like to know that I can enroll my daughter in face-to-face, but I'd also like to know that the school has a plan in place to go remote if the risk in the community at that time outweighs the benefit of face-to-face instruction. So I guess the question that I'm posing, and someone can follow up with me after the meeting, is, I mean, do we have any specific criteria for that that is available to parents? I know there are a lot of us that are struggling with the decision for second semester, given where we're at right now, and not knowing where we'll be in two months. Wanting our children to have that face-to-face option, but also wanting to know that if it's unsafe to do so, the MPS will intervene. So that was my primary question, and the other thing that I wanted to mention that I was interested about this is now that the Midland Health Department is going to be doing limited contact tracing, how will that affect Midland Public Schools when we do return to school in person, hopefully in mid-January?
Okay.
So I don't know if those are questions you can answer now, or if someone wants to follow up after the meeting, but those are the points that I wanted to present tonight.
They are not questions that I can answer now, but Stephanie, as a parent of four children in the district, I understand absolutely where you're coming from, and I have some of the same concerns myself, so we will get you an answer to those questions as soon as we can.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you for joining us tonight. We appreciate it. Okay, up next, we have Mr. John Mulvaney. Are you with us, Mr. Mulvaney?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. My name's John Mulvaney. I'm father of a current chemic and one graduate. I have been a social studies teacher at Midland High for over 20 years, having instructed some of your children and one of you. I live at 735 South Ireland in Midland. I'm also in a copy of this document to the board and superintendent, so you can access relevant links. I was inspired as I viewed the meetings the board had with Amy Beasley this summer and saw the hard work and heartfelt sincerity shown by the participants while discussing how MPS can maximize the goals of diversity, equity, and inclusion in our community. The unanimous acceptance of the new mission statement, working definitions, and proclamation and racism show positive steps toward realizing the board's mission to lead with respect, trust, and courage, ensure an equitable collaborative and inclusive culture, and enable all to achieve success. It seems MPS has two distinct eras regarding DEI, EP before proclamation, and AP after proclamation. My concern is that sometimes it seems this document is more like a whisper than a proclamation. Many think they've heard something about it, but not sure if they even heard it at all or heard it right. The MPS strategies that include DEI policies and communication, posting a position for a diversity director, and many other things have formed, but do they have function? It's like building a multimillion-dollar house without any doors. It's nice to look at, but hard to use sometimes. I'm here to ask the board to confirm that the intent of all these strategies are to take real action and walk in the door of the DEI house, not just tap lightly into the wall and the door. Teachers on the front lines of the classroom need your unwavering support. We are going to focus on applying the spirit and the technique of proclamation, not just worrying about what is defensible, but in a potential lawsuit. I'm also here to ask the community if they support the board in enforcing this proclamation and everything within it. This is especially relevant in the light of President Trump's racial sensitivity executive order of September 22nd banning the federal government and contractors from taking part in racial sensitivity training, and the fact that 56% of Midland County voted for the Trump-Pence presidential ticket. If the majority of the community supports such an executive order, it's an open question if they can incur on this order, the proclamation is written. Assuming continued support for the proclamation, I am presenting my interpretation of MPS policies and action plans for my classroom and at Midland High regarding DEIs outlined below. Despite the wide variety of current MPS DEI activities, as I always tell my own kids, we can always do better. MPS has taken some tangible steps away from systemic racism and specific racist incidents, but this is going to be a long race, and the marathon has just begun. The most recent racist incident a few weeks ago has reminded many in the school community that we can always do better, and I would like to thank the superintendent for communicating with the staff by emailing 23 pages of relevant documents on October 29th. I also studied the three pages of the proclamation and three more, the DEI working definitions. Even more clarity may be provided from the 29 subsections of board policies available on the MPS website. I've attached the link in my document for convenience. As helpful as all these documents may be, I imagine it can be overwhelming to apply them effectively during the day-to-day running of school. In the superintendent's All Staff Manual from October 29th, it states that despite these discussions that have occurred regarding that most recent incident, where some believe MPS has backed down in this statement or proclamation, we have not. We view the symbol as presently harmful to our learning environment and the individuals involved understand that it's not allowing MPS. The statement seems to suggest that not backing down is defined as no longer allowing someone MPS, ensuring that if any party knows this, it can be the case. If this is accurate, would backing down be described only as allowing the individual or others to wear the offensive symbol? I don't know the answer to that question, but what I'm saying is I think we can do better in the future. It's my opinion that the action in this case does not contribute to the psychological safety of school community members, nor rewards vulnerability without fear of being embarrassed or punished. On the contrary, it seems to have a tone of defense minimization. As you can see, I paid attention to the PD video on November 3rd and encourage you to also view Dr. Murray's presentation if you haven't. In Board Policy PO5517, it states, "All share responsibility for avoiding, discouraging, and reporting any form of unlawful harassment, and the school district community are encouraged to promptly report incidents of harassing conduct to a teacher or administrator so that the board may address the conduct before it becomes severe, pervasive, or persistent." So I'm accepting this call to action, as I believe over the last few years, this conduct has become severe, pervasive, and persistent, possibly leading to a sort of conflict trauma for the district. I will not list the incidents here. They can be easily reviewed by giving a Google search of MPS racist incident, though some do not show up in public because they were dealt with internally or informally. The regularity of these incidents has resulted in MPS pledging to be hyper vigilant in viewing social media posts, symbols, and written verbal communication for any signs of racial harassment. As I have said, positive steps have been taken, but I believe we can always do better. One way to do so is to be proactive and sadly leave an excessive incident might occur. Using the As I have said, positive steps have been taken, but I believe we can always do better. One way to do so is to be proactive and sadly leave an excessive incident might occur. Using the documents listed in the reference section, I've created a table highlighting MPS' stated goals of context, current action plans, policies, and how to do better. I plan to share this regularly with all stakeholders at MHS with the goal of changing the system, eliminating racism, and creating a more equitable, inclusive school for all. I am not an expert in any of this. I'm not a lawyer who can parse the legal letter, the law, or policy, but I believe I understand the spirit of the proclamation and racism, and MPS' new mission statement, and I'm sure I understand the intent of many of my former and current students, who made up a majority of the petitioners and marchers who have been calling for MPS, to do better regarding DEI. I ask that you please advise me if any of the definitions or policies below are incorrect or if any of the actions to do better counters any board policy were intended. If this is the case, I may have misinterpreted the documents. Please educate me about referencing specific lines of the district policies and guidelines, as I have done in the table below. If I do not hear anything, I will assume everything is accurate and actionable. Some may say that now is not the right time to focus on DEI, but in the middle of a pandemic, to focus on just keeping the schools open and the school and community safe, perhaps, but there's always going to be something, and it's our racial equality is purposely put on top of the list. It won't be. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. spoke with the fierce urgency of now and warned of the tranquilizing drug of gradualism in 1963. That was over five decades ago. So the plans for action listed below are a direct result of my study of the documents listed in the reference section. I believe these actions would help us to do better. My intent is to apply these actions within my classroom and encourage my colleagues and building leadership to do the same throughout MHS. A. Use the formal complaint procedure for any incident that is or may be racial harassment to ensure full investigation and record-keeping to maximize transparency and public accountability. B. Use in restorative practices, focus on restoring justice to the victim of any racial harassment, along with the wider school community, not just restoring the perpetrator. C. Develop more numerous and improved educational opportunities for staff, the goal of teaching how to recognize and deal with racial harassment, using mandated contractual or PD time as much as possible to maximize staff attendance. D. Communicate regularly and deliberately with students and families, ensuring they know what constitutes racial harassment in MPS. E. Regularly reference the proclamation and working definitions of every stakeholder in the school community to familiarize them. F. Develop and distribute what I would call 911 cards that allow students to report to a staff member when their education has been disrupted or they have been racially or otherwise harassed. G. Develop and reference a checklist, if then processed, or bully administrators to assist in determining whether racial harassment has taken place and appropriate actions have been taken regarding perpetrator, victim, teacher, and other students and staff. And finally, H. Look at MPS' policies holistically regarding any incident that may result in discipline and community restorative, for example, in the case of freedom of speech issues, to focus on any acts of insubordination regarding district policies, or if an action causes substantial disruption or obstruction of any functioning of the school, not necessarily just a freedom of speech or opinion issue. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to any feedback you may have from me in the future.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for joining us tonight, Mr. Mulvaney. We appreciate it. Okay. Mr. Chapman, nice to see you again. How are you tonight? Good. Thanks for joining us. You have the floor.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you, MPS, Dow Chemical Company, the staff that put together the DEI program for Midland Public Schools, the effort that has gone into this makes me proud to be a member of the teaching staff here in the district and also parent of three students who graduated from Midland Public Schools. I am so grateful for the need for DEI and the recognition that the board has taken on for this need to make sure that all students feel like they have a sense of belonging in Midland Public Schools regardless of race, sexual orientation, gender, or religion. It does not escape me that this is a courageous step when fully implemented. The racial aspect of DEI is particularly challenging. For over 400 years, systemic racism has impacted every facet of American life. The board proclamation has positioned MPS to dismantle our institutionalized racism. This first step is critical in telling all students that they belong at MPS, and is just as critical in telling the races that your bigotry does not have a place in our schools. I'll refer to this dual message as inclusive and exclusive. We want all of our students to experience an inclusive environment, and any exclusive behavior will not be tolerated. Unfortunately, our handling of a recent event has skewed this message and gives DEI the appearance of window dressing. When a dial cross-country runner displays a white power sign for a team photo, there was a swift reaction, and I took personal comfort in knowing that we, as a district, condemned this type of bigotry. A few days later, another dial cross-country runner wore a T-shirt to Midland High School featuring the same terroristic sign. Fortunately, the teacher aware sent the student to the office. In about 15 minutes, the student returned to class, and the issue and what ensued is not very clear. The student would be suspended. The student, the suspension was appealed. The district backed down. No, the district didn't back down. The parents did not want the suspension, so the suspension didn't happen. The student remains in class without suspension. Just as a drop, just as a, just as a rock drops in the water, so this one act has a continual ripple effect. Teachers questioned if we really mean what we say as a district. Other students within the classroom conjure up their own schemes to test the boundaries. Teachers feel unsupported. Teachers refuse to be the first line of defense because bigotry is still too easy to overlook. I refuse to overlook it. Just last year, Britton Torrent murdered 51 people in New Zealand. While in court, being tried for 92 counts of murder and attempted murder, he proudly displayed the white power sign. Some may say that I am too harsh. I am jumping to too many conclusions by comparing a Midland student to the likes of Torrent or to Dylan Roof, who sat in a prayer meeting with nine people and then murdered them point-blank. My response is real simple. If it looks like a duck, if it sounds like a duck, it must be a duck. A student who flashes a sign, associates with racists, and then wears the shirt to apparently recruit other students must be a racist. Now, if I had my way, the student would not have been given, the student would have been given the choice of two options: suspension or participate in a meeting with his parents and the teacher and a DEI representative that would explain to the parent and the parent and the student the inclusive and exclusive focus of the district and give the student the opportunity to make MPS a more inclusive environment. The student would then be allowed to disassociate from his behavior. The class and the teacher would be able to move on without negative, without the negative ripple effects of his actions. It is my hope that we will learn from this experience and minimize the ripple effects of future racial issues.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. We appreciate you coming in.
Thanks, Jenny.
And we appreciate your comments. Mr. Kraus. Eric Kraus?
Hold on, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right. I'm Eric Kraus, math teacher, my 25th year, and the father of a chemick and varsity boys' basketball coach for 19 years. Before I begin, I want to make clear that I am coming to you not as a bitter, near-the-end -of-the-road employee. May leave it, but I'm not there. On the contrary, I truly have a passion for Midland High, the students, the faculty, and administrators I've had. One of them was out there, Mr. Jaster, I think. I have loved being here, and I still do. Also, you, the board, I just want to say you're in a tough position. No matter what you do, someone will be angry. From a very tiny level, being a varsity basketball coach for years, I can empathize with you. And by the way, since I'm here, as the oldest and the most experienced basketball coach in the state of Valley League, I have to state honestly, I agree with your handling of our sports situation as of this time. Figured if some people are getting mad at you, I might as well join the fight and get some more people mad at me. Anyway, having said all that, let's get to the reason why I'm here. I'm here to express my disagreement with downtown administration's handling of an incident that had a very clear and well-intentioned racist message. The message so strongly violates our proclamation versus racism that I'm still very angry about it weeks later. I made my opinion known very clearly and loudly a few weeks ago. A little bit after that, you know, Mike Sherrill sent out an email addressing the situation to his credit, and in it, he stated, "Some staff members," probably me, "feel we backed down." We didn't. Well, here's why I disagree, a few reasons. The first statement of our proclamation, "The board is committed to eliminating racism, bigotry, hate, and violence in any form." The incident which Mr. Chapman spoke about, where a student that I feel is fully aware of the meaning of what he did, really bore no consequences. I'll repeat, I believe you backed down. The board number five statement is, "The board is committed to practices so students, families, community members, and staff feel safe, safe, visible, valued, respected, and connected." The teacher involved, who was heroic, in my opinion, did not really feel all that supported, did not feel like the credibility had been retained. There were some students in class that were shocked, but they couldn't really speak out, and there's staff that, when they were informed of this incident weeks later, were shocked and angry. Imagine being a person of color in that classroom. Safe? Safe. Let me repeat. You backed down. Number nine, their statement, conduct and policies, there's a, there was a one-day suspension levy. It was appealed. According to our appeal process of the paperwork I read, suspension of more than one school a day but not more than 10 may be appealed. I was always under the impression in my years of experience that you couldn't appeal something of just one day. Maybe I'm wrong. Also, number nine. We commit to educating students and staff on the impact of their actions and fully understanding the harm they've committed. Speak to the people in that class, speak to the teacher. That didn't happen. You backed down. I spoke this summer, commended you, and you deserved it, on the proclamation. I also warned you. I'm not sure if you remember it. Not sure if anyone remembers the warning I issued. You can look it up. I said, "You're going to take heat for this." I know where we live. You're going to take heat. Are you ready? You said yes. In basketball, sometimes when a ref makes a questionable call and a person shoots a free throw and they miss, you know, we say, "Bod don't lie." Bod don't lie. We backed down. We weren't ready. I strongly urge you to reconsider your actions regarding this situation, and I stressed to you, "We can do better." You're good people. Good, good people. I know a number of you. You're good people. We are Midland. We don't back down. People have asked me, "Why am I doing this?" Why am I up here? You know, just settle off in the distance and retire. Shouldn't it be, "Why wouldn't I do this?" Why wouldn't I do this? There's a Friday message at Midland High. For years, I used to kind of poke fun of it. I liked it. And it was like every now and then, you know, it was something like, you know, "You're fine just the way you are." And I'd always tease my students. I go, "No, you're not, because if you were fine, we wouldn't be saying this every Friday." And the kids, they shut up for us, and we'd laugh. There's one point in there. It's always the right time to do the right thing. Why am I doing this? I'm a chemick. The way I coach. We don't back down. We don't back down. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. We appreciate you joining us tonight. I think we might have lost him. Okay, we have one more speaker waiting to address the board. That is Ryan Shatner. Ryan, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hey, Ryan. Thanks for joining us.
Certainly. Ryan Shatner, I have a kid at Chestnut Hill, a stepdaughter at Northeast, and a stepson at Midland High. And I, I guess I'm just here to ask the question if the board and superintendent took every possible measure before closing elementary school. I'm sure you are aware that early education is the most important, and I'm not sure how my kindergarten son is going to have a quality education if he's home and not with his teacher. So I guess that's my only question. I know you're not going to answer any questions, and I'm not going to talk and talk and talk. That's, I just hope you guys are considering, you know, everything.
We absolutely are, Ryan, and I can tell you right now, we've taken every possible precaution, and this is, this is something that weighs heavy on all of us. A lot of us have children in the district. I have four in two different schools, and we're all in the same position. It is just an extraordinary time and something that we're adapting to on a near-day-to-day basis. But you should be able to find on our website a list of the precautions and all the efforts that we've made thus far to, to keep our kids face-to-face or to at least give our, our district families that option, which is something that a lot of districts did not offer. So we're trying. We, we fought and fought, but I think, you know, like you see the cartoons where you put, you plug a hole in the dam and pretty soon you run out of fingers and toes. I think we're there. We're, we're out of fingers and toes, and the leaks are still coming.
All right.
So thank you for joining us. We appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you. Megan, I think there's nobody else. We're good? Okay. All right, folks. Thanks for joining us tonight. Next up, we have our CIA. We have some curriculum instruction assessment minutes. Lynn?
The CIA committee met on October 19th, and the first item of business was the Sex Education Advisory Board. Steve Poole confirmed the 2021 Sex Education and Birth Control Advisory Board. Reverend Wally Maithen continues as a co-chair along with Steve. Overall, the number of teenage pregnancies and sexually transmitted diseases has decreased over the last three years. Next, we talked about the NWEA update. Allison Sisinnelli, Jen Service, and Ann Schiffer gave a review of the NWEA MAP Growth Assessment readiness and rollout. Key points included an overview of initial district data by grade level, MPS trends slightly above national average. The MAP growth is also part of our district continuous improvement goal areas of safe, collaborative, and equitable culture and balanced assessment system. Margaret Doan gave a principal's perspective- Margaret Doan gave a principal's perspective on using data school-wide, grade level, and classroom level. Lastly, we had a DEI update. Amy Beasley shared the DEI project teams that are aligned to the subcommittee with an update and status of each. The first two teams to launch are the DEI Skill Sets Project Team and the Active Ally Resource Group Project Team. We adjourned at 2:45, and we met today, and those minutes will be forthcoming at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn. Appreciate it. Next up, we have item 5.2. Uh, Penny Miller Nelson is going to tell us about the 2021 Advisory Board on Instruction in Sex Education and Birth Control.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, as Member Baker just mentioned in the minutes, uh, we have announced our 2021 Advisory Board on Education and, uh, excuse me, on Instruction in Sex Education and Birth Control. Uh, Reverend Wa- Wally Maithen and Steve Poole have agreed to be our co-chairs. We also have Amy Jaster, who is a health professional and parent. Michael Donovan is a health teacher. Marnie Williams, who is a health teacher and a parent. Owen Jowick serves as our student rep, and he is a student at Midland High currently. Evelyn Presnell is another student rep from Dow High. Dr. Jeff Newman is a health professional and parent, and Mr. Brad Blazy is our board member who, uh, serves on that committee. This is a requirement of the Michigan Department of Ed. We meet only when necessary and have not had the necessity to meet for some time. So this is for your information.
Okay. Thank you. And thanks, Brad, for serving as our liaison to that board. Well, uh, next up, we have an action item. Penny, if you want to take 5.3?
I do. We'll get some slides up here in just a second. So as promised, every month, we will have our, uh, reconfirmation meeting per, uh, the legislation from, uh, from our state. And these are the same slides that, uh, we've seen in the past, so we will skim through them. Uh, the first is just to reconfirm instructional delivery. Nothing has changed as of today in how we are delivering instruction as written in the plan. I emphasize "as of today" because next month, when we bring you this plan, we will reflect the move to remote learning more specifically. Our levels of instruction of our special populations has not changed either. As I mentioned to you, uh, last month, these percentages are based on enrollment in the full remote setting as well as the non-remote setting, which includes face-to-face and hybrid. So these will remain static until we transition students at semester. This is the one piece that will change each month. This is a required summary of public comment that we've received. I'll draw your attention to the fact that we certainly don't shy away from, uh, the critical feedback as well. We have a requirement to share that. So again, we have several parents who have requested changing of their learning environment for their students. We have some that want to move from virtual to face-to-face, and some face-to-face to virtual prior to the semester timeline, and of course, we're holding firm on that. We have received several emails of appreciation that we continue to offer the multiple learning formats, so we're proud of that. Uh, praise for our elementary virtual format in particular, since we have MPS teachers working directly with students. We have parents expressing concern that there is too much homework in the secondary virtual format, students who are in edgenuity in particular. And Mr. Lauer continues to try to strategize with students and families on how to manage expectations and how to manage that workload. Interestingly, we have parents expressing disappointment with the music department restrictions that we're holding firm on those health and safety protocols. And I say "interesting" because the bullet under that is that we've also received feedback praising us for holding the line on those, uh, more strict health and safety protocols for music. We also had the October Parent Information Committee meeting, and our topic was social emotional learning, and there was lots of favorable feedback about how we're tending to students' well-being. I will also include the two pieces of public comment that we received tonight that pertained, uh, to our, our COVID plan. So I'll add those, and those will be, um, uploaded to our transparency page. The last piece of this is our two-way interaction rates, which I'll ask Jeff to speak to.
Thanks, Penny. As we discussed last month, this table represents the percentage of students who have achieved at least two two-way interactions per week, and I think I'll avoid reading those line by line, but the three columns are all students, obviously in column one, 100% remote, and then the last column is a combination of our hybrid and in-person students. And so what I'll do instead is just kind of give averages. So, uh, for this past month, since the previous board meeting, the all students are averaging about ninety-two and a half percent, uh, of the two-way interactions required for people accounting. Those who are 100% remote, that's about an 85% average, and those that are not 100% remote are about a 95, just over 95 and a quarter percent average. Compared to the previous month, those are all down slightly. Um, my assumption is, uh, two weeks ago, we had the week of the election, which was a short week. It was a four-day instead of a five-day week. And then last week especially, really going back two weeks, we were seeing much higher than normal quarantine rates. So I think all those things have impacted, and so, uh, just to give you a sense of, uh, the slip, it's, it's averaged about a 2% drop. So in the first column, all students I just listed, that was about a 92 and a half percent. Previous month average was about 94. Um, the 100% remote group, I had said this month's average was 85, previous month was 87, and that holds true for the last column as well. This month was 95%, previous month was just over 97. So again, I think that, uh, over the past two weeks, those factors that I mentioned are what have influenced the slight decrease.
Okay. All right. So at this time, I will take a motion to adopt the extended learning program reconfirmation.
Make a motion to approve item 5.3, District's Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan Reconfirmation.
Support.
Motion by Phil. Support by Pam. Any discussion? Item 5.3.
In the last table, um, we see those numbers are declining down. Are there key numbers in there, or this is something that we're required to record this? What's the background of that table? Is there a certain numbers that, if we were to hit those, that are going to be flagged and say, "Oh, we need to do something"?
Correct. We're well velvet. It is required, but Jeff, those exact numbers?
It's a 75% threshold.
Yes.
If you fall below that, you run the risk of not, uh, being able to, um, capture some of those, uh, pupils in your student count, and then, you know, there's some implications possibly for extended period for funding if that were to go on for a prolonged period of time.
Jeff's app, right. It's really the quarantine less changed as much as anything. So you went from, uh, two weeks ago, about a hundred or some, that were quarantined. Today, we're 480, 490, I think it was today, and so that, uh, 2% drop, 2% of 7,000, quarantine less is driving that down.
And that's, the 75 is the face-to-face number? Or that's a?
I believe it's all, overall.
That's all. 75% overall, which, again, our first column is, is strong. We've been in the 90s, so we're still in a good position.
Okay.
I'll just remind you too, Mr. Blazy, the 75% threshold is, as it pertains to this particular report under the, um, Extended COVID Learning Plan, it is not necessarily the same information that we would be reporting in the same way for people accounting purposes. So I don't mean to complicate that more, but...
People counting requires the two-way interaction in the virtual only.
Right. So the, the way that we are reporting this data is specific to what's required for this particular Extended COVID Learning Reconfirmation Plan.
Clear as mud, right?
Yeah.
But it's what MDA does to us a lot, so.
I'll just say, rest assured that we, and teachers, and, and building administrators, we're all really working hard to make sure that students are attending and we're following up, uh, when they're not.
So do we have concern that when we transition a week from now, that, do we have a feeling of what those numbers are going to look like? Are they going to, obviously going to trend down? They could.
They could, but the two, the two-way interactions are fairly low threshold. I don't want to jinx myself here.
Sure.
To, to reach that, though.
And I would add that attendance will continue remotely, so through the virtual meetings, every, um, Google Meet session that a teacher hosts for students, uh, there's a printout or a, I think it's an email confirmation of all the students who logged in during that session. So the teacher's going to capture all those attendance rates. So there's certainly a risk that some kids could get lost, uh, periodically, but we are going to have a plan in each building for administrators to support the teachers in the follow-up, just to make sure we don't have kids, missing one day is, you know, not a big deal, as Mike referenced. The two-two-way interactions is a relatively low bar, but, uh, we don't want to have patterns emerge that become more, you know, more permanent. So we're going to work on that right away.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, FFO, item 6.1. Mary, you have some minutes for us.
Yes.
Thank you.
We met on November 2nd. Rick Vanderpoel, uh, from Barton-Madalo presented the builds for the stadium bleacher replacement, and the recommendation for award will be brought to this meeting. Mr. Sherrill, Mr. Bruton discussed the following topics with the committee. The September financials, financial statements were discussed with an emphasis on continuing COVID-19 impacts. Um, purchase orders and purchase card expenses above the bid threshold were reviewed. Um, number two, executive summary report, the placement of the bond, uh, executive summary and the board agenda was discussed with the committee. The committee recommended to keep the current placement of the report as it is considered to be supporting document in line with the other support documents provided in the same section of the agenda. There are three, the tractor purchase bids for three Kubota tractors for maintenance and snow removal were reviewed. A recommendation for the award will be brought to this meeting. Um, insurance review, results of exploring splitting the lines of property and liability coverage among vendors were reviewed with the committee. A recommendation for award will be brought to, uh, the special board meeting on November 4th. Number five, summer tax collection resolution, the board will be asked to approve the annual request for the city of Midland to collect half the school tax loving, including debt surfaced during the summer tax collection period. Six, diversity, equity, and inclusion updates were provided on the director of DEI posting and interview process. Our next meeting is Monday, December 7th at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mary. Okay. Next up, we have a series of action items, beginning with item 6.2. This is the summer tax collection request. Mr. Bruton, are you?
Yes. Yep, thank you. Um, as Mary just said in the minutes there, it is a standing practice for us in MPS to ask the city of Midland to collect our taxes over two cycles, a summer and a winter cycle. And state law says that if we are going to ask them to continue that by January the 1st, we need to give them notice that we would like them to continue that. So presented before you tonight is a resolution asking the city of Midland to continue with that practice. That's something that we greatly appreciate as a district, as that collection greatly helps us with our cash flow during those periods of time in which we do not receive state aid payments. So you have a resolution presented for you tonight, asking for the city of Midland to continue that request.
I move, I move to approve the resolution for the levy of summer 2021 taxes on property located within the school district and within the city of Midland. A complete copy of the resolution shall be attached to the original of these minutes.
Support.
Does this have to be a roll call on this one?
Does now.
Okay. Motion by Phil. Support by Mary. Any discussion from the board regarding item 6.2? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, action item 6.3. This is a tractor purchase. Mr. Bruton.
Thank you. Um, when we were developing our budget for this year last spring, Mr. Morgenberg brought to us a proposal during the budget process to purchase three tractors for three separate campuses within Midland Public Schools. The Woodcrest Campus, the Seabird-Jefferson Campus, and also the Plymouth Northeast Campus. And he would like to purchase these tractors to help with maintenance efforts, including lawn mowing and snow plowing. And we did accept bids, and we are recommending tonight to issue a purchase order to the low-bidder Lingal Equipment of Saginaw, Michigan in the amount of $56,955 for three four-wheel-drive diesel tractors to assist with the maintenance that Mr. Morgenberg is requesting from us.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll accept the motion.
I make a motion to accept the tractor purchase in, uh, from Lingal Equipment Incorporated,
Support.
Motion by Mary. Support by Phil. Any discussion regarding item 6.3? All in fa-
Makes sense.
It does.
Makes sense.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up, item 6.4. This is a bond bid package for 21, 21-201. Uh, it says, Brian or Mike?
Brian can give the financials. I can add to it if I need to.
Yep, thank you. Um, so bid package 21-201 was mentioned in the presentation that Mr. Vanderpoel and Mr. Dombro gave to us earlier this evening. Um, this is for the replacement of the bleachers at the community stadium. Um, as you know, in the past, we've had to do some structural work to make sure that we were dealing with some of the erosion issues that were happening over at the stadium. And so we put out to bid the complete replacement of those stands. And you will see that we're presenting to you tonight that bid plus alternate A1, and for clarification for the board, alternate A1 is actually an extension of the bleachers, and the extension of those bleachers will make up for seating that's going to be lost due to widened aisles and extra handicap seating that had to be added due to code. So we will not be losing seating, um, and this extension and site work that's related to alternate A1 added a little bit of cost to the scope of the work. So after receiving bids, we are recommending two awards for this bid package. One award for the grandstands themselves, two E and D specialty stands out of North Colling, New York, um, for a total of $717,880, and the site work to Pat's Grade All of Midland, Michigan for $318,000, for a total award of $1,035,880 to do the community stadium bleacher upgrades.
Make a motion to approve item 6.4 for the awarding of the bid package 21-201 with the alternate for $1,035,880.
Support.
Motion by Phil. Support by John. Any discussion regarding item 6.4?
Does, does this include the, uh, change that has to happen to the spectator side as well?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And this, this is coming-
So it'll be ADA on the vis-
Correct.
Visitors.
And then, um, it also, it, it was an extension from money that we had, savings we had.
This is, this will be covered by your bid savings. Um, and it's washed in their interest in bid savings both. Make sure we say that correct.
Yeah. And then for the handicap seating, is that, where is that? And are there rails too, or how does that work?
So handicaps up at the top, but the railing moved the aisleways out. You would have lost a certain number of seats, and so the stands will be extended a little bit over to the hills there, the presently the grassy part of the hill, to make sure we do not lose seating.
Okay.
Okay.
We have plenty of seating in the stadium, but not necessarily on the home side, if you've been to some of those contests. So we couldn't really afford to lose that home side.
Right.
So is it part of the verbiage in the package, I'm sure, and through the interview process, that E and D was well aware of the special situation that we have at our stadium with a new press box, a new track, and a new field?
Yeah, they are, and they came up, uh, I think it was part of what, how they got the bid, um, a different design to do that, that they're going to reach in from the side, I think. Brian, if I recall, the explanation from Barton-Madalo, so they're going to come from the side, remove from the sideways, especially with the extensions, we're going to touch on the hills a little bit versus up the top, so they don't do that. So yes, they were.
Yeah, Barton-Madalo actually told us that they were the ones that spent the most time doing their bid. So they spent the most time at site doing all the research on how to do it to address your concern.
Yeah. They felt real comfortable with the idea.
Okay. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. Next up, we have information for gifts totaling $17,516.25.
Thank you, Mr. Frone. Um, as you just stated, we have 20 gifts for information to present to you tonight for the total that you just stated, and they range all the way from continued support by the Hollenbeck Foundation to support Luna, the therapy dog- Luna, the therapy dog, over at Central Park, all the way to kindness week contributions from the Midland Area Community Foundation. And as is our tradition, we will honor each of these donations with a letter from the Board of Education and also on the credits to the meeting tonight. And we are very grateful to all of them for their support of the Midland Public Schools and the programs. We also have item 6.5 for action, two gifts totaling $15,545. One gift from the HHDL Sports Boosters for $7,000 for fall and winter sports equipment, and another from the Woodcrest PTO for $8,545. And we would appreciate your action tonight to accept those gifts, so we can get those processed.
Absolutely.
Make a motion to accept item 6.6 for $15,545.
Support.
Motion by Phil, support by Mary. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much, absolutely. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. We humbly accept those gifts. Next up, item seven, human resources. Did we have, I'm sorry, did we have minutes, John?
We do not this month.
No, okay, not this month. Okay. So, Mr. Jaster?
Thank you. Would you like me to do point, 7.1 and point 2 together here?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay. First, 7.1, the following staff members have announced their retirements. First, Ms. Mary Jo Griffin, been a teacher at Adams Elementary. Her last day was October 30th of 2020. An upcoming retirement, Ms. Janice Kulik. She's our enrollment and McKinney-Vento specialist here at the admin building, and her last day will be December 31st, 2020. The next, section 7.2 in memoriam. The board and staff extend their deepest sympathy to the families of Ms. Ruth Lois Martin. She passed away on October 22nd, 2020. Ms. Martin was hired in 1958, worked as a music teacher, coordinator of language arts, and was a building principal at Cook Elementary. She retired in 1998. And then also, Mr. Craig Winslow Pelletier. He passed away October 16th, 2020. He was the manager of the faculty athletic, or faculty athletic manager, excuse me, of Midland High School. He was also an English teacher there in the building. He was first hired in 1970 and retired in 2004.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next up, we have item eight. This is correspondence to and from the board. 8.1 is letters from the Board of Education to three entities there. They can be found in the agenda. Item 8.2 is regarding letters to the Board of Education. They are for-year requests. They can also be found in the agenda. Item nine is just a list of our regularly scheduled meetings going through May 17 of 2021. That brings us to item 10. This is our study discussion session, 10.1. This is the, we are going to now establish the Board of Education Officer Nominating Committee. And so in front of us, if you guys could just fill out the, put a check by two names. Historically, the board president is always on the nominating committee, so we need two other board members. Megan will then tally the votes, and I will read the results aloud. Thank you, Megan.
I think this is where somebody says, stop the counting.
Scott, while she's doing that, should I make a motion to extend meetings until we go into closed session as well?
Yeah. Yeah, let's do that. Go ahead, Phil.
I'll make a motion that we extend by, I'm thinking, 45 minutes to 10:15 at the latest?
We can do that.
Support.
A motion by Phil to extend our meeting time to 10:15. That's one hour from now. Will be extended 45 minutes. Support by Mary. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries.
You can go on to your comments if you have any.
Sure. We'll move along to 10.2 while Megan is tallying the votes. Any questions from board members regarding points of clarification on anything that was discussed tonight? Before we turn the floor over to Mike for some comments before we go into closed session. Okay. Mike?
Megan's got the countdown, and I'll save my comments while we go into closed session for evaluation. So there's no sense of...
Fair enough. Okay. The board nominating committee will consist of myself, Pam Singer, and Phil Rousch. And so we will get together. What is our, what is our timeline, Pam or Mike, for the three of us to meet?
For your January 20, or January organizational meetings, not 20, it's a little earlier, five.
January 11.
January 11.
Okay. So we'll get together at some point before then and hash out...
Probably mid-December would be good.
Okay. We'll work on that. Thank you. Okay. At this point, we will take a motion to go into closed session.
So move.
Motion, I'm sorry. Motion by Mary?
Just take your purpose.
Yeah. Oh, we're gonna, I'm sorry.
For the purpose of superintendent evaluation.
Thank you.
Support.
Explain that to you, rolling in, you're performing it, but you don't take action until the next month.
Correct. Motion by Mary, support by Pam. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're going to be in closed session.